As you can see, we got a full house, a full agenda. And it's time to start.
You might want to tell on the foot there is up too.
Is it in here?
It's supposed to be up on.
In here?
They don't know you're here. Councilman, put your name up front so people know who you are. Thank you for letting me know. Right. You can tell that works. Good morning, Chester, and those of you in the visiting audience. Welcome to the Chester City Council meeting for Wednesday, June 26, 2024. We're going to open like we always do with prayer and the pledge. Today, the prayer will be offered up by Bishop Kendon Gibson, Worship and Praise Church of Chester Chaplains Corp. All rise, please.
As we look to the Lord, Father, in the name of Jesus, Lord, we come to you this morning. God, we present ourselves before you first, Lord, thanking you for all that you've done and for the things that you're getting ready to do. Now, Lord, we need you to look upon our council, touch our mayor, every councilman, and every councilwoman. Lord, look upon our police department, God. Lord, look upon our fire department and our city as a whole. God, we ask you that you would unify us. For, Lord, you said in your word how good and pleasant it is for brethren to come and dwell together in unity. Lord, we ask you, Lord, that you would bring us together as one unified body in this city, throughout this city. Look upon us as we come to discuss, this is still your business. So, Lord, we ask you to govern us accordingly. Give us what we need and take off our plates what we do not need. We say thank you for all the things that you're getting ready to do. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Excellent, thank you.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Counselors Gibson?
Present.
Green?
Present.
West?
Present.
Davis?
Present.
Mayor Roots?
Present.
Like to make a motion to approve the minutes from...
There are no minutes.
There are no minutes. Okay, thank you. Agenda items only. Does anyone have any comments that they would like to share? Agenda items only. If so, come to the mic and get your mouth right on that mic because it's pretty, pretty, pretty testy, pretty tough. Seeing no one, we'll move on. Scroll a little bit. Thanks. There we go. Old business. Anybody on council have old business they'd like to discuss or share? Okay, well, I'll start. We had an executive session on... Do you remember the date, Mr. Solicitor?
Yes, Tuesday, wasn't it?
Monday.
Monday.
Monday. And we were discussing a new policy we're looking to implement. That's our ethics policy. We are all finally in agreement on what we want to see in that policy. The final draft or the final version is being crafted by our solicitor. Should be due today or tomorrow. And we'll be looking to have that on our next council meeting for a first reading. Also, in terms of old business, we had a Safe Summer Summit last Wednesday, Juneteenth Day. We had over 70 community members, community leaders, nonprofits, church. People from all walks of life came in. I want to thank everyone who came in to every person and organization providing summer activities for the youth. The whole idea behind that was to let people know, to let people know that there are activities in the summer for young people. One of the things that we did find, though, is that although there are a lot of activities for young people across the city, that many of those activities are full. Many of those organizations that have activities are at capacity. So, we encourage anyone who has activities that they would like to, you know, propose in the city, please, it's time to do it. It's time to roll out. And to the extent that we can help you in the city by providing parks or locations for you to have your activities, that would be good. Just talk to us. We also had in the room people who are willing and able to help you stage your activities with funding or whatever. So, as a result of the Safe Summer Summit, which I can't say any faster than that, we put together a page. Can we bring that page up? At least what it looks like. There's a page on the city website. The city website is chestercity.com/safesummer. And on there are many of the activities. There it is. Camps, sports, community events, parks and playgrounds, summer employment, food programs, and things that are near Chester. The curfew notice, and it scrolls on and on and on. So, we're happy to see that go up in less than a week. Very good, thanks. Also, yesterday, I presented to the business community and county officials, the state of the city. There will be a professional video recording available soon for those of you who missed it, and it will play on the city's TV channel. I'll also deliver the state of the city address across the city to various residents at various locations to be announced real soon. They'll be free, open to the public. So, look for that announcement as well. Moving on.
So, good morning, everyone. I just wanted to take a few steps back and recap event we had a few weeks ago, the Father's Day, just last Juneteenth Walk Parade. That was a huge success. I was happy to see the CAT Center, various different organizations, our fire department, police department, and everyone come together to support Juneteenth, as well as the fathers and father figures in the city of Chester and within the community. So, I just wanted to give everybody a round of applause and say thank you for such a wonderful event.
Good morning. While we're at it, I am happy to announce that we will be doing a Fourth of July celebration on Fourth of July. And this year will be at Memorial Park. And prayerfully, it will also be the opening of the pool. So, hopefully, we'll have the pool ready and the Fourth of July celebration starting at 3:00 PM on Fourth of July. So, flyer will be forthcoming. This, we're just now getting it together, but it will be together in the next several days. So, join us.
And I wanted to say good morning to... They hype up off the pool. I want to say good morning to everyone and to thank Councilman Davis. We had a celebration for our seniors, and we look forward to doing something like that every year to highlight their achievements. So, thank you for pulling that together last minute. You did an awesome job.
Thank you.
And if I would read my own notes, I would have also mentioned congratulations from mayor and council and all of the city of Chester to Jamal Allen, who we call Shake. He's the track, the track coach over at Chester High School. The girls' four-by-four-hundred track team won the state championship. For those of you who don't know him, he's a former track star himself. He got into a very bad accident years ago, and he's confined to a wheelchair. So, it's really unusual to see a track coach in a wheelchair, but he still knows how to coach. And every day, he has kids as young as five years old up at the athletic field running. Now, I've heard some complaints around the community, "Why are these kids running when it's 98 degrees?" They're kids! They should be outside. They should be running. So, he's, he's making sure they're safe and hydrated and all that. It's, it's, it's not torture. They're, they're not being punished. But as you can see, he builds champions, and we're really proud of him and the track team. So, that's great. All right, and this is where we turn it over to our clerk.
Bill number three, an ordinance. An ordinance of the city of Chester, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, of the codified ordinances of the city of Chester, Pennsylvania, 1978, as supplemented and amended to delete in its entirety and repealing all the following ordinances or parts of ordinances inconsistent therewith. The council of the city of Chester does ordain, section one, a review of the codified ordinances of the city of Chester has determined that certain ordinances are no longer reasonable and necessary and should be repealed. Based on that review, the following articles of the codified ordinances of the city of Chester and the ordinances that form the basis of the following articles are hereby repealed in their entirety. Article 1505 entitled, "Life Safety Code Adopted." Article 1511 entitled, "Permit Fees." Article 1525 entitled, "Open Burning." Article 1531 entitled, "Explosives and Fireworks." Article 1535 entitled, "Gas Stations." Article 1541 entitled, "Building Fire Protection Systems." Article 1555 entitled, "Smoke Detection System Installation." Section two, that all ordinances or parts of ordinances inconsistent with the provisions of this ordinance are hereby repealed. If any section, part, or clause of this ordinance is declared invalid or unconstitutional by a court of competent jurisdiction, the reminder of this ordinance shall remain valid and in full force and effect.
I move that we pass bill number three on its first reading.
I second that we pass bill number three on its first reading.
Any comments, any questions? I'll make one short comment. It, it... In her reading, she says that these ordinances are no longer reasonable and necessary. And if you look at them, you might think to the contrary. Like, why wouldn't we have an ordinance for permit fees and life safety codes and open burning and explosives and fireworks and gas stations and so on and so forth? The reason why they're, they're certainly reasonable, they're not necessary because all this now falls under and has fallen under the International Fire Code for some time. So, what we're doing here is just taking them out of city ordinances, and they're, they're, by default, because the city has adopted the International Fire Code, they're already covered. So, that's why it's, that's why this is being passed today. Madam Clerk, roll.
Counselors Gibson?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Roots?
Yes.
Resolution, the council of the city of Chester does resolve that it does hereby approve the consulting agreement submitted by PMT Consulting LLC to provide a written review of the city's parking management operations through a comprehensive review of the city's direct pass-through service calls, assess lot operations, and appraise parking enforcement effectiveness. Further, that it does ratify the execution of the, excuse me, of the consulting agreement by the proper city official for and on behalf of the city of Chester. Further, said agreement is contingent upon the final approval of the city solicitor.
Before I move this, in the fourth line in that first paragraph, after "cost," that word, is it correct?
Says assesses lot, operations.
No, no, I'm talking, okay.
I think it should say assess.
The, the word, here.
I, I see the word, and it should, it's misspelled. It should say assess.
Assess. I didn't type the council. I have to move this.
No, it's fine. No, you're fine. Yeah, so what is the correct word it should be?
Assess.
Oh, okay.
Spell it out.
A-S-S-E-S-S.
Need that last S.
It wasn't me that typed it.
All right, I'm, I'm moved that we pass this resolution with the necessary correction.
Yes.
Second.
Any questions, any comments? All right, Madam Clerk.
Counselors Gibson?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Roots?
Yes.
Resolution, the council of the city of Chester does resolve that it does hereby approve the master service agreement submitted by GLS Professional Services LLC to partner with the city's finance department to set purchasing and procurement disciplines by creating and implementing tools, techniques, and templates that will contribute, or contribute, my reading is off, I'm sorry, to the city's overall efficiency and effectiveness in procurement activities. Further, that it does ratify the execution of the master service agreement by the proper city official for and on behalf of the city of Chester. Further, said agreement is contingent upon the final approval of the city solicitor.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Madam Clerk.
Counselors Gibson?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Roots?
Yes.
Resolution, the council of the city of Chester does resolve that it does hereby promote Christopher McBreen from the position of battalion chief to the position of deputy chief, Bureau of Fire, Department of Public Safety, effective July 1st, 2024, with a 30-day probationary period at the salary range as provided in the annual appropriation ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Madam Clerk.
Counselors Gibson?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Roots?
Yes.
Resolution, the council of the city of Chester does resolve that it does hereby promote Brian Decker from the position of captain to the position of battalion chief, Bureau of Fire, Department of Public Safety, effective July 1st, 2024, with a 30-day probationary period at the salary range as provided in the annual appropriation ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, any comments? Madam Clerk.
Counselors Gibson?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Roots?
Yes.
Resolution, the council of the city of Chester does resolve that it does hereby promote Andrew Fritley from the position of firefighter to the position of captain, Bureau of Fire, Department of Public Safety, effective July 1st, 2024, with a 30-day probationary period at the salary range as provided in the annual appropriation ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? Madam Clerk.
Counselors Gibson?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Roots?
Yes.
Resolution, whereas on September 13th, 2017, Chester City Council approved a resolution to authorize the creation of a summer internship program. And whereas the program's intent is to provide high school students with an opportunity to gain real-world experience and develop skills in an office setting during the summer months. And whereas currently, the city allows high school students who are residents and/or will be 16 years of age by the start of the program to participate. I'm sorry. How do we change to 15? It's supposed to be changed to 15.
Well, it's already at 16. We're changing it to 15.
Is it down in another, oh.
Yeah, all right.
I think I'm like, wait, I knew that part. Let me go back and reread that. My apologies. Whereas currently, the city allows high school students who are residents and/or, or will be 16 years of age by the start of the program to participate. And whereas after further consideration, council has determined that lowering the start age for the program may be beneficial to students. Now, therefore, the council of the city of Chester does resolve that it does hereby authorize the change of the age requirement to participate in the city of Chester's summer internship program to offer an opportunity to high school students who reside within the city of Chester, who are or will be 15 years of age by the start of the program. Further, said program parameters are contingent upon final approval of the city solicitor.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments, any questions?
I'd just like to acknowledge Dr. Green, who is here, who helped us support this. So, we have a summer youth program that has come through the Chester Education Foundation. And normally, we hire students who are 16 years of age, but now, we're going to decrease that to 15 years of age so that way, we can give more young people an opportunity at internship. So, that's what this resolution is about, and I look forward to supporting it.
I'll piggyback on those comments. There's been a lot of confusion in City Hall as to how young you can be to work here. So, we dug out, up this resolution, which dates back to, as you can see, 2017, where we created the summer internship program, and the, the target was 16 years old all the time. But this is sort of our response, the city's response to the Safe Summer Summit. I gotta keep saying that slow. We realize that we can hire people too. And with the help of the Chester Education Foundation and what the non-doctor Elaine Green does over there in preparing kids for work, pairing young people for work, we're really happy to have that as our feeder program. So, we know when they come, they're ready to work, and it's just a great opportunity for the city to play its part in making sure that there's just a few more kids off the street working productively here in the city. And we're not going to have them doing a menial task. We're going to put them right into city government, rotate them around departments so they can learn how government works and have a respect for government, and hopefully, share it with their friends and become, you know, productive citizens and be ready to vote when they turn 18. So, we're really excited to play our part in this.
I'd like to ask for a hand.
There she is.
She's very, very supportive of our youth here in the city of Chester, and we're just glad to have you on our team. Thank you.
Madam Clerk.
Counselors Gibson?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Roots?
Yes.
Resolution, the council of the city of Chester does resolve that it does hereby authorize the submission of an application to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, Department of Environmental Protection, for the zero-emission vehicle grant for the purpose of funding the public works fleet replacement in an amount not to exceed $1,575,074. Further, it does hereby authorize a proper city official to submit the application for and on behalf of the city of Chester.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
And again, on this resolution, the city is doing its part to go green. And so, we're trying to turn our gas fleet into electric fleet. And so, through the, the state, they have a grant available that's going to help us purchase some new electric vehicles that will help the city, so.
Madam Clerk.
Counselors Gibson?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Roots?
Yes.
Resolution, whereas a request has been made to the city of Chester for the installation of an honorary street sign to commemorate the service and dedication of the late Reverend Dr. J... I hope I do not mess up this.
Pious.
Thank you. Pious Barber along a portion of Baker Street between Edward Street and Central Avenue. And whereas Reverend Dr. J. Pious Barber served as the pastor of Calvary Baptist Church from 1934 until his death in 1974. Dr. Barber was trained at Morehouse College and Crozier Theological Seminary. Later, he taught at Tuskegee Institute and pastor churches in Texas, Alabama, and Indiana. During his pastorate, Dr. Barber served as an elected delegate to the Baptist World Alliance in Copenhagen, Denmark, and the World Assembly of Churches in Amsterdam. In addition, Dr. Barber mentored the late Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., while King attended Crozier Theological Seminary from 1948 to 1951. And whereas Dr. Barber made significant contributions to Calvary Baptist Church, the residents of the city of Chester, and the world. Now, therefore, the council of the city of Chester does resolve that it does hereby authorize the installation of an honorary street sign renaming the portion of Baker Street between Edward Street and Central Avenue to Reverend Dr. J. Pious Barber Way as tribute to his dedication to the advancement of our community. Further, it does authorize the Department of Public Works to order and install the aforementioned sign.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions?
He was our pastor. We, we grew up under Reverend Barber. And I joined Calvary Baptist Church when I was about, I guess about 12, you know. And he was, he was a great man, and his leadership was impeccable. And I'm just so happy, mayor and council, for your support of the installation of this sign commemorating Reverend Dr. J. Pious Barber. Thank you.
So, when it was brought to my attention that we wanted to do this sign, I didn't hesitate to say yes. This man is a larger-than-life hero here in the city of Chester. Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King would not have come to Chester if it wasn't for J. Pious Barber, who was a close friend of Martin Luther King's father. So, they were contemporaries, they were friends. And when Martin Luther King was to go to seminary school, his father mandated that he come here to the Crozier Seminary to study and to be, you know, tutored by J. Pious Barber. And we both were little, little, little people in, in the congregation when J. Pious Barber was preaching. He was an imposing figure who wore a monocle. I don't think I know anybody else who wore a monocle other than Mr. Magoo in my times. But it does, this, this sign, this street naming is very consistent with the, the move that we're trying to make here in Chester, and that is to recognize our heroes and to make Chester a tourist attraction. Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King is one of the icons of what the tourist attraction will be here for Chester. So, I am thrilled that this is happening. I won't say it's long overdue, but, you know, whenever we do it, it's the right time. So, let's take full advantage of this opportunity to get to know one of the, I can't say it any better, one of the giants of, of Chester history and a big, big, big factor in Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King being the guy that he turned out to be. Madam Clerk.
Counselors Gibson?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Roots?
Yes.
Before I read the next resolution, there was a change. It says zoning here and board. Mr. Solicitor, I just want to make sure I'm correct. It should be the parking authority?
Is this the request of councilwoman?
It was supposed to be the parking authority.
Okay. So, we'll just put the changes.
I just wanted to make sure, because I know it's, oh, I thought it was up on the screen, so. Okay, every, is everybody? I don't know. This was what was told to me, that's why I'm saying something now, before I get to read.
I mean, the person that it's saying she's filling. I mean, the person that it's saying she's filling with the unexpired term is Patricia Worrell. She was on the zoning.
Zoning, yes.
So let's table this until we get it right. So I make a motion to table this uh appointment until we get it right.
I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, we're going to table this resolution for Charette Golson until we get it right. We apologize.
Resolution, the council of the city of Chester does resolve that it does hereby appoint Adely Evans as a member of the Chester Parking Authority Board to fill the expired term of Marney Hudson, term to expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Can I get a motion? Can I make a motion? Can I get a second? Alright, that died on the vine.
Resolution, the council of the city of Chester does resolve that it does hereby appoint Elizabeth Williams as a member of the Chester Parking Authority Board to fill the expired term of Pamela Haynes, term to expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six.
Can we get a motion? No motion, no vote. Next.
Resolution, the council of the city of Chester does resolve that it does hereby appoint the following individuals to the position of patrol officer, Chester Police Department, effective July first, twenty twenty-four, with a one-year probationary period on a full-time basis with all benefits applicable thereto at the salary range provided in the annual appropriation ordinance. Number one, Ashby Shantene Brown. Number two, Michael Tierney. And number three, Brandon Chamberlain. Further, said patrol officers are required to reside in the city of Chester for the first five years of employment and must submit proof of residency to the Human Resources Department within three months of their date of hire. Thereafter, they may maintain their residence within fifty miles of City Hall.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? I'll just make a quick comment that we're so happy to have you. Madam Clerk.
Councilors Gibson.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Roots.
Yes.
Resolution, the council of the city of Chester does resolve that it does hereby appoint the following individuals to the position of police cadets, Chester Police Department, effective July eighth, twenty twenty-four, at an hourly rate of fifteen dollars per hour on a per day basis, not to exceed eight hours per day, five days per week with no benefits. Number one, Leroy Whitaker. And number two, Angel Carrion Jr. Further, said police cadet shall attend the Delaware County Community College Academy to receive the required police certification and successfully complete all other pre-employment requirements.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? I'll just make the comment that the last resolution was uh, appointing patrol officers, which means they're going to go on the street right away. This particular resolution that we're reading now is for police cadets. That means they're going to go to uh the academy, Delaware County Community College. They won't hit the streets provided that they get through the academy until March. Both of these individuals, Leroy Whitaker and Angel Carrion Jr. are both Chester residents, one being black, one being Hispanic. Isn't that what we're looking for in this town? We're so excited about that. Madam Clerk.
I'm sorry, I was trying to clarify something with the police commissioner. Should we have had that in here in case, for payment?
That's, that's correct. The way the academy goes now is some weeks will be five days and the other will be six days. So there will be a lap over in hours.
So is this the last resolution that we're adding, going to add?
Correct. It should be added to Whitaker and Carrion that will be going to the police academy, or sixty-eight.
Okay. I move that we um pass this resolution, number sixty-eight, um, with the proper corrections.
I second. We move this motion with the proper amendments.
Okay.
Any further questions or comments? Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Councilors Gibson.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Roots.
Yes.
Mayor, before we move on to what you and I discussed, police commissioner wanted to introduce the police officers? Cadets, I'm not sure who's here.
Before I do that, it's, I mean, I look back here, I see the fire department. I praise you guys, men and women, very strong. Bill Rigby, back there, you know. So I let them do their thing and then we'll come up next.
Then you want to?
Yeah.
Okay.
I gotta give you their praises.
Okay.
Because if not, I'm outnumbered.
Alright, so we're going to move on first with the swearing-in. Commissioner Shirley, there he is.
Good morning, Mayor and council.
Good morning.
The only thing I will say is that uh, we have three individuals that are being promoted today. Two of those three positions require oral interviews. And uh, after those oral interviews were concluded, the comment from everyone on those interview panels was, they were amazed at the talent that we have here in the Chester Fire Department. And um, even though we're only appointing three today, the future leaders of the fire department are in the crowd and in the people behind you. So just rest assured that um, we have today's leaders and tomorrow's leaders ready um when those times come. That's the only thing I will say is, um, we have a great group of individuals and I'm honored to be, you know, leading those people.
Alright, this is a first for me, so bear with me, but this is the deputy chief oath of office. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Christopher McCrean.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To do my duty as the deputy chief for the city of Chester Bureau of Fire.
To do my duty as the deputy chief Bureau of Fire, city of Chester.
Very good. To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
To serve my commanding officers.
To serve my commanding officers.
And fellow firefighters.
And fellow firefighters.
With respect and dignity.
With respect and dignity.
To serve the citizens of the city of Chester.
To serve residents of the city of Chester.
With compassion.
With compassion.
Courage.
Courage.
And integrity.
And integrity.
And to uphold the laws.
And to uphold the laws.
And constitutions.
And constitutions.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
The Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And the Charter of the City.
And the Charter of the City.
Of Chester.
Of Chester.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
I would just like to thank Mayor, Council, Commissioner Shirley, Chief Wender, who was, I guess, unable to attend. Uh, my brothers, sisters in the fire department, family and friends who were able to make this journey with me, who, who came out to support me today. My wife, my two boys, uh, the rest of my family, and my sisters and my parents who were able to come, uh, my favorite sister Emily. And the residents of the city of Chester. I look forward to continuing to serve you in this new role, and uh, our doors are always open. And I look forward to Assistant Commissioner Shirley into moving this department forward. Thank you. Captain McCrean? Captain Decker?
Battalion chief oath of office. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Brian Decker.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To do my duty.
Do my duty.
As a battalion chief.
As a battalion chief.
For the city of Chester.
For the city of Chester.
Bureau of Fire.
Bureau of Fire.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
To serve my commanding officers.
To serve my commanding officers.
And fellow firefighters.
And fellow firefighters.
With respect.
With respect.
And dignity.
And dignity.
To serve the citizens of the city of Chester.
To serve the citizens of the city of Chester.
With compassion.
With compassion.
Courage.
Courage.
And integrity.
And integrity.
And to uphold the laws.
And to uphold the laws.
And constitutions.
And constitutions.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
The Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And the Charter of the city of Chester.
And the Charter of the city of Chester.
So help me God.
So help me God.
You did it.
Congratulations.
Got to say a few words. I'd like to, I'd like to thank uh my family first and foremost. It's been a uh, it's been a ride, but my wife's supported me all along the way. My parents, my brother here. Council, Mayor, I appreciate you uh putting your trust in me to uh serve this town. I'm ready to get to work. I'm ready to give these, the residents, the uh, the service they deserve. Firefighter Friendly. The captain oath of office, aye.
State your name.
Andrew Kirby. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To do my duty as a captain.
To do my duty as a captain.
For the city of Chester.
For the city of Chester.
Bureau of Fire.
Bureau of Fire.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
To serve my commanding officers.
To serve my commanding officers.
And fellow firefighters.
And fellow firefighters.
With respect.
With respect.
And dignity.
And dignity.
To serve the citizens.
To serve the citizens.
Of the city of Chester.
Of the city of Chester.
With compassion.
With compassion.
Dignity.
Dignity.
And integrity.
And integrity.
And to hold the laws.
And to hold the laws.
And constitutions.
And constitutions.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
The Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And the Charter of the City.
And the Charter of the City.
Of Chester.
Of Chester.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you, everybody. At the end, thank the uh Mayor and Council, as well as my command staff, fellow firefighters, family, and uh, look forward to continuing to serve the city of Chester in my new role.
Yeah, it's better sight.
That was exciting. I want to recognize two former commissioners of the Chester Fire Department. William Rigby, Riggsby, sorry. James Johnson, he was here somewhere. And I also want to say, Commissioner Rigby, I heard about your little accident. You look like you're doing well. You're healing fine. You got a great tan. Retirement must be doing good for you. Continue to have your speedy recovery. Alright.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Last council meeting, uh, we addressed a few issues. Um, and it's no secret, I stand in front of you as the police commissioner, and I always talk about staffing, staffing, staffing. Um, individual here, Chris Oisman, present Lodge twenty-seven. Been in meetings with him. I coordinate with him. And I'm the chief of police association. And what I see is going on is, is that some of our officers are being handpicked to go to other police departments. And I try my best to do whatever I can to make them stay, but it's tough. But about six months ago, we had a police test and there was twenty applicants. Through the twenty applicants, we have five applicants. Uh, they kind of took my thunder. I, they didn't think I was going to call them up here. But Carrion, front and center. Front and center. Brown, Whitaker, Tierney, and Chamberlain. If you see who stands behind me, they gave it their all and they're standing here with me. And one thing I will tell you, I'm born and raised in this city. I'm a second-generation police officer. And I want to get this message to you all loud and clear. The residents here and the city, there's no better feeling when they love you and they, and they brace you. When you get that feeling from the city, they will stand with you. But if you decide to get out of line or screw up, they will check you. And I got some better news, too. Please, spread the word. July eighth, we are testing again. I will put out our testing of what you need to do for this physical agility test by Friday. It's on our social media. Spread the word. I know some people are tired of me hearing about hiring, hiring, but I need as many officers as I can. Welcome, yeah, it's on. Just try to get as close to the mic as you can when you speak. Welcome to Chester. The show is yours.
Excellent. Thank you so much, and, you know, we mourned with you. We saw the news that day, and I think you guys did a great job of postponing and getting to where you needed to be, so that was very.
Thank you.
It was very good to see that your priorities are where they need to be, so thank you again, Mayor and Council. We're going to give you a quick presentation. Yes, why don't I go like this? I'm not going to. So, this is, you know, a little bit about us, because the first thing I want to let you know is that, you know, this is not the first time, you know, we've done this in a city. Also, we want to give you a little history about our company. Our company was started in 2005 in New Orleans. I am from Fort Lauderdale, so I am, you know, I'm down south. I do travel into New Orleans a lot, so I would be remiss to tell you that it's pronounced "Norlens." So, 2005, you know what happened in 2005? Katrina hit. So, we started our company in 2005, humble beginnings, and Katrina hit, so we're used to adversity. We got through it, but what's important about this timeline is in 2013, we actually, as operators, so we were operating our own operations, we decided to build a platform. We decided to build an app. You can't do that today because it'll cost you upwards of $15 million to do that, but we did it. We started off small, and now this is where we're at. The app controls everything in our system. So since then, we built everything from beginning to end, so when there's a payment at the meter, we'll know about it. When there's a payment on the phone, we'll know about it. When someone signs up for residential parking permits, we'll know about it. When a resident has a visitor and wants to validate their car that's going to be parked in the front, we'll be able to tell them, use this promo code, and you can validate it, and they won't have an issue. We wrote this code from the beginning, so this is ours. This way, we have full control of our platform. There's multiple channels of payment for our services. Everything from text-to-pay, camera pay, you don't have to have a smartphone. You can call our 1-800 number, which is 24 hours a day, and the people that are answering the phone are within the United States. They are in New Orleans, and you'll be able to get someone to help you through this. So if you have a flip phone, it doesn't matter. I can tell you one thing, technology's not going to keep you from following the rules as we go through this, and you'll see that as my presentation goes through. So bottom line is that we're a parking operator that built technology to be more efficient. We're not a software company that built something to sell. That's a huge difference, because we use it for our own operations, so it has to work, and it has to be user-friendly. This is where we have seen success in the past, and this is just a few for you all to, you know, to see what we've done. We've done great work in Oklahoma State Parks, where people can actually reserve campsites and so forth. They're using our app. It's extremely user-friendly. City of Annapolis, we have not only a garage operation on-street, but we also have the residential permit program as well there, so we've done very well. But, I'm here to tell you that there is no other place like Chester, and we're very cognizant of that. We show you this so that you know that this isn't our first rodeo, but not to tell you that we're going to cookie-cutter something and put it here. It doesn't work that way. None of our programs work that way. So, what's important, so I felt that it's important for you to meet me in person, and for you to meet our team in person. This is, you know, this is where we come, where the rubber meets the road. I'm a little bit old-fashioned that way, in that I do believe in shaking someone's hand, looking them in the eye, and talking to them, instead of sending them an email. I'm up on top, and yes, Chester Escobar, so no relation to the Escobar that we all know. Chesker. I'm from Nicaragua, and there's some Cheskers over there, so it's very nice. I've never heard my name said so many times. It's wonderful. But, you know, 27 years of parking experience, 14 of them, I worked in executive levels for the parking department of two municipalities. I have worked with residents, I have worked with focus groups. I know about, you know, rolling out a program in parking, and I know that none of them are the same. Matt Mosley's downstairs, he's the gentleman that is taking, you know, your calls, or, you know, having, if you have any issues, he's the one that's answering those questions. And then David Sullivan is going to be our guy on the ground here. We'll have his number on an ongoing basis. He's got great, you know, parking experience. He's worked for two universities in the past, so I think we hit a home run here with our staff. Here's our approach, and here's where I want, this is where I really get excited, because this is a management contract. You did not lease out your parking to us, and for us to be able to survive and try to make money off of this, no. All of the revenue goes to the city. Everything from the, you know, revenues coming in on your system, the resident decals, to fines that are given. We are not incentivized to write citations. Well, I need you to understand that, because I think that's extremely important. What do I do? Or what do I have? I have reimbursable expenses and non-reimbursable expenses. My reimbursable expenses are in a budget that you all have already approved. My non-reimbursable comes out of my fees, and that's it. And there is no moving target. There is no, you know, bonus or any incentive to either write more citations or make more money for the city. That's very important. So, we understood that it starts from now, how our relationship goes with the community and with the city. Parking ambassadors, you know, we don't see them as parking enforcement officers. I think when they're out there doing their job, they need to know where the best coffee place is on, you know, on Main Street, where to get good tacos, where, you know, that's what I want my folks to understand, that they're out there trying to help folks pay for their parking. Not going out there in any predatory nature whatsoever. And then, it always starts with community and its history. So, we cannot start here as outsiders and say, you know, let's start enforcing your rules without getting to know and taking time to understand your community. And that's what we do right at the beginning, and that's why I'm here in person, instead of sending you an email, because I believe in that wholeheartedly. You know, I was in the coffee shop twice already, you know, two days in a row, and I've had great conversations with everybody. And then we want to make, we want to create a culture of compliance. So, what that means is, we need to make it very easy for you to communicate with our system and to interact with our system, any way that you can. So we have, you know, a phone number you'll be able to reach. We've already passed out some pamphlets, so we have the technology, we have the right technology, we just got to make sure that we make the payment simple. And I'll start off with this also, or I'll, you know, I want us to understand something in the parking world. In the parking world, there's operations and there's policy. I, you know, I operate in the operations side. I cannot do anything about policy. I enforce the policy that are already there, that when you have comments from me, and you tell me your rates are too high, or your fines are too high, those are policy issues that I have no control over. So that's a big difference. Now, if you tell me, hey, your officer was rude to me, that's a different story. That's my world that I live in. There's a very, very big distinction there. But our mentality has always been, we want people to pay, we don't want to give them a citation. That's always been our policy. And then, we'll talk about implementation. This is, we're going through, I mean, we've been working at this for a while during the contract, during a lot of meetings. We've got, July 1st, the residential parking program goes into effect. Now, when I say goes into effect, it means that we are putting the policy in place, but we're not going to enforce. And as everybody starts getting used to it, we've already gotten about 300? Yeah. About 300 folks have already signed up, and this is just after, what, two weeks? So I think we've been getting pretty good response so far. I think people want their streets in front of their house sort of cleaned up a little bit, you know, from people that aren't supposed to be there, or cars that have been abandoned. And if you haven't gotten this so far, don't worry, we're going to get through it, you know, together, and if you have any questions afterwards, we'll be here. These are the three zones that we're starting off with. The new signage has already been approved. The only thing that's pending right now is how to interact when you have a guest coming over or family coming over. What do you do then? And that is not a policy decision, that's an operational decision, and it's administrative one. So we have a couple of suggestions for you all, but once we get them approved, we will go ahead and deploy them. How does it usually work? Well, we'll decide how many visitors passes you'll allow in a resident, and then we'll go ahead and make sure that those folks have the ability to validate those tags when the person comes in. Sounds simple, and it is, and you don't have to come down to City Hall. As a matter of fact, you don't have to come down to City Hall for anything to do with parking. You don't have to get a hand pad, you don't have to do anything. Everything is done online. August 1 is paid program, that's when we kick that off, and paid program will be the central business district. Something important also to point out is that we're not expanding on the program, we are just bringing the program back up from where it was before. There is no expansion whatsoever. And then moving forward, we'll work, you know, we'll work with the city. You've got some great opportunities for people, visitors that come in and out of your city, that I think parking is a user fee. It's a user-based program. So you should be capitalizing when people come into your city, especially, you know, to go see soccer. So there's a lot of parking in that area, so we'll put these programs together for you, and we'll give you some options, but we're at your beck and call. This is how the signs are going to look. We decided that, you know, blue was the color of Chester, so you will see the blue, you know, throughout the residential zones. These are the residential zones, and, you know, we could get, we're not going to get into the detail of the operations in this presentation, I just wanted to give you an update of where we're at with it as well. These are the paid zones, same type of, you know, signage. Our signage is extremely clear. You've got signage that tells you, you know, directional signage as people are driving, not much detail. Once you drive in, it gives you a little bit more detail, and once you get out of your car, it gives you real good detail. And that's the progression of signage, and that's how signage should work throughout any program. This is important as well. We want to hire local. We want to reach out to local agencies, local community. We want to reinvest in the community, so I heard, I mean, I saw a shirt, Boys and Girls Club, I know that there's a food, you know, program. We want to be part of that. We want to sponsor it. We want to be able, you know, you guys have, you know, we want to be part of this community, and I think that's the only way that our program will work going forward. We want to buy local, so if there's something that we need that we can buy locally, we want to do that as well here. And we need to understand first before we want people to, you know, to buy into the program of what we're trying to do. So, understanding means listening a lot more than speaking, which I haven't done today, but, you know, I'll do throughout. But I just wanted to come in person, I wanted to introduce myself, let you know that, you know, we're here, we, everything we've seen so far, we like, and I hope you stop by downstairs, and, you know, we go from there.
All right, open for questions. Council, any questions?
Yes, I noticed that we have Zones 1, 2, and 3, and you talked about the soccer stadium. In the future, is that what we're going to target, that those areas?
we're not gonna enforce. And as everybody starts getting used to it, we've already gotten about three hundred? Yeah. About three hundred folks have already signed up, and this is just after, what, two weeks? So, I think we've been getting pretty good response so far. I think people want their streets in front of their house sort of cleaned up a little bit, you know, from people that aren't supposed to be there, or cars that have been abandoned. And if you haven't gotten this so far, don't worry, we're gonna get through it, you know, together, and if you have any questions afterwards, we'll be here. These are the three zones that we're starting off with. The new signage has already been approved. The only thing that's pending right now is how to interact when you have a guest coming over or family coming over. What do you do then? And that is not a policy decision, that's an operational decision, and it's administrative one. So, we have a couple of suggestions for you all, but once we get them approved, we will go ahead and deploy them. How does it usually work? Well, we'll decide how many visitors passes you'll allow in a resident, and then we'll go ahead and make sure that those folks have the ability to validate those tags when the person comes in. Sounds simple, and it is, and you don't have to come down to City Hall. As a matter of fact, you don't have to come down to City Hall for anything to do with parking. You don't have to get a hand pad, you don't have to do anything. Everything is done online. August one is paid program, that's when we kick that off, and paid program will be the central business district. Something important also to point out is that we're not expanding on the program, we are just bringing the program back up from where it was before. There is no expansion whatsoever. And then, moving forward, we'll work, you know, we'll work with the city. You've got some great opportunities for people, visitors that come in and out of your city, that I think parking is a user fee. It's a user-based program. So, you should be capitalizing when people come into your city, especially, you know, to go see soccer. So, there's a lot of parking in that area, so we'll put these programs together for you, and we'll give you some options. But, we're at your beck and call. This is how the signs are gonna look. We decided that, you know, blue was the color of Chester, so you will see the blue, you know, throughout the residential zones. These are the residential zones, and, you know, we could get, we're not gonna get into the detail of the operations in this presentation, I just wanted to give you an update of where we're at with it as well. These are the paid zones, same type of, you know, signage. Our signage is extremely clear, you've got signage that tells you, you know, directional signage as people are driving, not much detail. Once you drive in, it gives you a little bit more detail, and once you get out of your car, it gives you real good detail. And that's the progression of signage, and that's how signage should work throughout any program. This is important as well, we wanna hire local, we wanna reach out to local agencies, local community, we wanna reinvest in the community. So, I heard, I mean, I saw a shirt, Boys and Girls Club, I know that there's a food, you know, program. We wanna be part of that, we wanna sponsor it, we want to be able, you know, you guys have, you know, we wanna be part of this community, and I think that's the only way that our program will work going forward. We wanna buy local, so if there's something that we need that we can buy locally, we wanna do that as well here. And we need to understand first before we want people to, you know, to buy into the program of what we're trying to do. So, understanding means listening a lot more than speaking, which I haven't done today, but, you know, I'll do throughout. But I just wanted to come in person, I wanted to introduce myself, let you know that, you know, we're here, we, everything we've seen so far, we like, and I hope you stop by downstairs, and, you know, we go from there.
All right, open for questions. Council, any questions?
Yes, I noticed that we have Zones One, Two, and Three, and you talked about the soccer In the future, is that what we're gonna target, that those areas too?
Yeah, you can...
And what zones, I'm sorry, what zones would they be labeled as?
Well, those are, those would be more commercial zones for the folks that are coming in, but you're right, some of those zones are being taken up, they're being encroached on by some of the people that are going to play, you know, going to see the game. So, that's a good point. Those would be, that would be the next one, right? So, that would be, that's what you usually do, you regulate parking and you protect the residents first, and then whatever's left over, you sell to the general public. So, you're increasing your parking inventory while protecting your residents. So, that's a great point, yeah.
Just to piggyback off Councilwoman Gibson, I also believe that that's something that we seriously need to look into. If all residents have to pay, so should those eighteen thousand people that come in and out of our city. And so, that should be the next step, soon as we get this in place and you roll this out, the next step is looking at the soccer stadium and Widener University.
A hundred percent. Yes, yes.
Will there be a location, everybody doesn't have technology in the home.
Yes.
So, will there be, will there be a central location where people can come to, to get set up, they can come here?
Downstairs.
Okay.
Right downstairs, we're taking over where the parking, yes, where the parking was. And the good thing, though, Councilwoman West, is that they will also be able to call a 1-800 number, and we'll walk them through.
Okay.
So, that, and that's twenty-four hours a day, and like I said, it's in New Orleans.
Okay.
Thank you. I know something that was mentioned in our meeting a few days ago was, how do we plan to protect the residents that might have multiple members of their families in their homes, who might have multiple cars parked outside of their homes and can't afford to pay the additional fees that are not already in place via the policy that we have already? So, I guess the question is, how do we protect our residents financially, who are just trying to live their lives and not suffer from, you know, simple things like parking? I understand removing, you know, abandoned cars and cars that aren't supposed to be there, but sometimes you might have a household of five to six people, and they might have a car per individual, that's five to six cars. But I believe currently in the policy, it only goes for like two cars per household or something like that?
It's two cars?
Okay, so how do we plan to protect the residents who might have more cars?
So, it's two vehicles. I think that, again, we're gonna slow walk this, so we're not going out there and enforcing right away. I think these are the kind of nuances that we're probably gonna bring back to administration to possibly come back and amend some of these issues, because you're right, I mean, some of these codes have been written, ordinance has been around for a very long time.
Right.
So, we might wanna take a look at it again. Yeah, absolutely. As far as the cost is concerned, you know, that's per the code, it's twenty-five dollars for the entire year.
Right.
So, I think that if we do have an issue, though, with someone not being able to pay, maybe there should be a program that says, hey, this person cannot pay, and they showed us proof, and this is it, these are perfect example of policy decisions.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
My turn. To that point, you know, policy issues are what our job is as mayor and council, so just to be clear, you're coming in following the policies that were already set in place for parking, and you're executing on behalf of that. What we have to do as mayor and council is just look at that policy and see where we need to tweak with the help from you when you're out there, that will be good. But there was one area that I was curious about, the guest passes. You said that's not part of the policy already, that's an operational thing? Explain that a little bit for me.
It does talk about residents only in this ordinance from what we saw.
Okay.
But, we do know that there was a policy in the past for day passes, but it's not in the ordinance.
I got you.
So, we've, we just gotta make sure, and especially if we do, you know, make any amendments to this, I think those are the type of amendments we're going to go offer as well. And to your point, Mayor, our contract is such that you can make all the policy decisions, and it won't affect us. In other words, I didn't use the revenue coming in as, you know, as a percentage of us being able to operate. So, it leaves you completely open to do whatever you'd like to do.
And we will. There was one word you used in your presentation that kinda scared me, I don't know about the rest of you, but you said expand the program, and I just would rather use a word like alter the program, because there may be some neighborhoods that shouldn't qualify for residential passes, so...
Yeah, expanding, I meant the people that are coming into your city using your resources, using your, you know, your roads, and they're leaving, and they're probably leaving you with trash, and then you gotta pick up the pieces. I would rather see a city that has, you know, an attraction that way, like the stadium, capitalize on that, because they're paying somebody else. Capitalize, give it to the city, and then the city can turn around and give it to their residents.
All right, thank you.
I have another question. How will the public as a whole know that the parking meters will be back up and running?
So, we'll put up signage, we'll use a local newspaper as well, I think we've already disseminated to that information, we'll use your website, but the signage will be number one. And when I say that August first is when we go back up, that doesn't mean that enforcement goes back up, it just means that people will start seeing the signage, and we'll go from there. But we're gonna slow walk this, but they'll know the same way that they find out when this meeting is, the same way that they find out, you know, their information, we'll look at your, you know, if you've got Facebook or anything like that, but we'll do our best to make sure that everybody understands the, you know, the project when we open it back up. If you have any suggestions, we would love it.
So, I'm just wondering, maybe door-to-door or mailer?
Yeah, we could do mailers, we've done, you know, we've done for the residents, we've actually done, you know, QR code, we have a flyer that we went around and we did it.
Yeah, I've seen those, but like, again, everybody doesn't have the technology.
Yeah, so we could do that. We, you know, what you'll probably end up seeing throughout the CBD area is us putting on, you know, warning signs and saying, hey, by the way, we started the program back up again.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, absolutely.
And I know, when this was presented, and I raised a number of concerns and questions, especially in terms of each household is only allowed two parking passes. And knowing that, you know, you could have two parents and children and other adults in the household who also have cars, so some households may got three or four cars, and it's important that people know that these policies and ordinance was already in place from the previous administrations that had passed these ordinances that only allowed for two parking passes per household. And so, one of the contracts and resolutions that we passed today is for an independent contractor to do a study of this parking program and of all of the houses in Chester, so that way we can get the data, and hopefully we can raise that number from two to, you know, whatever number that data provides for us. And so, that was one of the contracts that we approved today, so that way we can get that data and we can get that information, so that way we can tweak those ordinances, because I believe we need to have more than two parking passes per household.
Absolutely, and what the consultant will do is, they'll try to figure out, you know, what impact that's gonna have on your current operations.
Correct.
Yeah, so that's perfect, that's the way to do it.
Yeah, I mean, impact is a big deal, houses, I'm sorry, households in the past didn't have three and four and five cars. A block is only so long, so if every home had four or five parking passes, it would be impossible. So, it's gonna be a give or take. One last thing, and then we'll, we'll close on this one. July first is Monday, and this is your soft rollout. What does soft mean?
No enforcement, warnings, so we're not gonna give any fines.
Okay, so hold on.
Yeah.
You said warnings, so if someone is violating, there will be a ticket on their car, so to speak?
No, it's a little flyer.
A little flyer?
A little flyer.
That will say what?
You know, the residential program has started, this is how you can get, you know, get permitted, and that's it.
Okay.
With phone numbers.
All right.
Nothing else.
Okay, and then August first is the official rollout, is that right?
Well, August first is the commercial side. So, nothing happens on the commercial side until August first. The residential, as far as the enforcement is concerned, we'll talk to your administration on when we start. We don't start until administration and everybody feels, okay, I think everybody's gotten the word, and then we can move forward. We'll also do that for the commercial side as well.
Okay, and what do you consider commercial, what do you, give me an example of commercial?
The central business district, all the metered areas.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
And I think we discussed the other day that the existing meters out there will have hoods on them or little things, so you'll know that you are not going to be putting quarters in the meters.
That's correct.
All right, really good, thank you.
All right. Thank you, credit cards, yes? Thank you.
All right.
I think it's still two dollars, which was the previous ordinance, so the same price is rolled over, so...
All right, let's roll into our reports. We're gonna report on our reports from the committees. Budget and Finance Committee Chair Davis?
Good afternoon, so, we're still morning, still morning, so good morning again, everyone. The Budget and Finance Committee has not met since the last council meeting, and there are no future meeting scheduled at this present time.
Community and Economic, please, quiet. Committee, Community and Economic Development Committee Chair Gibson Williams?
The committee has not met since the last council meeting, and there are no future meeting scheduled at this time.
Thank you. Human Resources Administration and Appointments Committee is chaired by myself, and we haven't met since the last council meeting, and there are no future meetings scheduled at this time. Parks and Recreation Chair Green?
The committee has not met since the last council meeting, and there are no future council meetings scheduled at this time.
Public Safety Committee did meet on June twenty-fourth, and the resolution that we saw this morning regarding the ordinances for fire is a result of that. We also had a presentation from police, which is very similar, ordinances that roll up into new police-related codes, so in the near future, you'll see those rolling forward for vote on council. Public Works Committee Chair West?
The committee has not met since the last council meeting, and I would like to schedule a future meeting, none has been set yet, but I, my plan is to meet with the new Public Works Director, and we need to get back on track. Now, it's my understanding from some members of Public Works Department that Chief Leitner wanted to meet with them first before they got with me, but I think we should all sit down and talk, and that's my plan, so that we can get a meeting back on the books for Public Works. That's my plan.
Okay, great. Rules Chambers Intergovernmental Relations and Strategy Committee is myself, and we haven't met since the last council meeting, and there are none scheduled. Our controller here today? Do not see her. Chief of Staff had a medical emergency that he's tending to. Good and welfare means it's public comment time. For those of you who have signed up, you have the sheet up there? You said you wanna get on there? All right, gotcha. All right, we'll start with Lynn Johnson. Miss Lynn Johnson. Bring that mic close to your mouth.
Good morning, Mayor and council, and to all assembled here today.
Good morning.
My comment is in reference to the Chief of Staff. However, he is not present, but, and I don't like to ask questions about folks that are not present, so that they could, you know, respond. However, I don't like it when I ask a question and I'm told to call and I get no response. I've called him four times. So, regarding that, who else can I call regarding the issue? Is it someone that's gonna replace him? I understand he's leaving, I don't know if that's true or not, but I heard that through the grapevine. If so, who else can I call regarding the issue? That's my comment for today. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Garfield Jackson?
So, good morning, everyone, excuse me. I'm gonna take the time to introduce Mr. Jackson, since him and I have been having conversations. Mr. Jackson is from the Big Brothers Big Sisters Program in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania. He's been working with the program for over fifteen years now, serving in the surrounding areas, Philadelphia, Delaware County, Chester County, and Mr. Jackson also served our country in the military, so I wanna thank you for your service again, sir, and thank you for coming to City Council today.
Hey, Councilman, good afternoon or good morning, Councilmember Mayor Roots, good to see you, I've heard a lot about you, and thanks a lot for having me today. Big Brothers Big Sisters, I'm quite sure that a lot of you have heard about it, our mission is to create and to support one-to-one mentoring relationships. We have, in the Chester area, we have approximately seventeen boys that are on our waiting list and four girls. And Councilman Davis and I, who I met on Delco Gibbs Day, we've been talking for the last couple months or so, and have come up with some ideas on how we can try to get this situation in a better light here in the city of Chester. I have to say, and I'm gonna just flat out and say it, that I was thoroughly impressed with this meeting today in Chester. We used to be in this Crozier Building, I think we left in two thousand and ten, and so, you know, it's a welcome experience to come back to Chester, see all the good things that are happening here, and Big Brothers Big Sister wants to be a part of that. I know that I wanna be a part of that, and helping to find mentors for our young boys in the Chester area. We wanna improve our exposure here in Chester. I don't think that from our point of view, that we've done a good job with that on the community base side. I know we have some other things that are coming in the pipeline, but from the community base side, and is where you pick up and you drop off your mentor. So, I think that we can improve our exposure here. I really enjoyed this meeting, I plan to be visible here at least once a month, I can't do it twice a month, but once a month, because I can see what's happening, what's going on within the community, and when you do that, then you can find opportunities where you can recruit people. Better by, by and from our leadership and from our staff here in regards to Chester, it is, it is a drive from the North Town area, from the Philadelphia area, but we can't let Chester be forgotten, it's in Delaware County, and Delaware County is one of the counties that we serve. If we're gonna serve it, then my thoughts are that we're gonna serve Chester as well. We have a program that's called Big Cousins, where we entertain the kids that are on our waiting list, and with the staff and with other Big Brothers that I've talked with Councilman Davis about, and that's something where we would need a venue, and not much, just chairs and tables, and we would play games and have pizza with the kids that are on the waiting list, to let them know that they're not forgotten. How about Marketing Department, focused on Chester recruitment, you know, God works in mysterious ways, I was sitting by, I was sitting by Ms. Carla Beaver, right here, who had a son.
You've got twenty seconds.
Twenty seconds, oh, wow, okay, yep, Carla Beaver, she had a son that in third grade, had a big brother here in Chester, they stayed connected. Her son is Devon Beaver Bayer, he is now a sophomore at Penn State studying cybersecurity, and it sounds like my time is up, but this is tough. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will be here till the end, if anybody has any questions, I will be here.
Appreciate you coming down. I did meet with the CEO of Big Brothers Big Sisters a couple weeks ago, they, he came down to my office and we met, and I introduced him to the mayor, and then the following week, myself and the mayor, we went up to a presentation that they had up in Philadelphia. Also, the superintendent of Chestnut Island School District, she joined us as well. It was a great presentation, and I know they're looking to, they got a three hundred thousand dollar grant... grant from Senator Casey's office, and so they will be implementing the program in Toby Farms, I believe is the target school. And so, they'll be rolling that out hopefully in the next school year or so. And they was looking for the support from, you know, local government and from a number of organizations. So, we're gonna do the best we can to support them, um, so that way we can, um, embrace this program and hopefully save some of our youth, uh, through this program.
Okay, very good. I just wanna say to, to council in the future, when we're bringing somebody, uh, that's, uh, representing a company, let's have them present so that they're not limited by the three minutes on, uh, public comment, just like we did with Premier Parking. But, we're glad you came down. Uh, thank you, Councilman Green, for introducing me to Mr. Marcus Allen, the CEO of Big Brothers Big Sisters. The relationship has been pretty instant and pretty, uh, well-connected right from the beginning. So, you can expect to see Big Brothers and Big Sisters operating in Chester. That's their objective. Uh, Senator Casey, you said three-hundred thousand. I thought it was six-hundred thousand, so, I think it was six-hundred. I just know it was a lot of money.
Yeah.
So, they're really committed to doing Chester. The, the one message that was overwhelming from Big Brothers and Big Sisters, they call the mentors the bigs and the mentees the littles. There's plenty of littles and not enough bigs. So, this will be an opportunity for many of us to, to get involved in mentoring that really matters here in Chester.
Men and women.
Men, women, and even, did I say men? I'm sorry.
Well, you mentioned, no.
Big Brothers Big Sisters.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's a combination program.
Right.
And they even make accommodations for the ill, the, the gay and lesbian community. So, I think that's a, a change. And it's over, what, one-hundred-and-twenty-five years old is the organization? Yeah, so, they've, they've got some experience. And it was the, kind of the feeder program that, uh, Mayor Good used to create the Amachi program, so, all that goes into play. J.C. Monachella.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I am happy to be able to give you guys some follow-up on some of the animal control-related things that we've been working on, um, in the city. Uh, my name is J.C. Malakella. I run the Chester City Help Incident Resource Page on Facebook. Um, so, we all know that animal control has been a big issue in the city, but a lot of that has to do with the lack of outside resources that pet owners have in the city. So, as a lot of you know, myself and a few other rescuers have been dealing with a lot of the animal control-related issues in the city for the past five years or so, and I've always been actively looking for solutions to help the residents in any way that I can. Just this past week, sidebar, our wonderful fire department assisted in the rescue of a one-hundred-and-fifty-pound German Shepherd from underneath the bumpout of a home. So, special shout-out to now Deputy Chief McGreen, who's no longer in the room, um, but big shout-out to him because he was the rock star with all that. Um, but anyway, so, over the past few months, I've been working tirelessly to figure out a way to bring more programs to the city and have finally been successful. I've been blessed to be able to secure a partnership with Providence Animal Center, their pet retention program, and their wonderful doctor, Dr. Black. This, in addition to working with forgotten cats, has allowed for many amazing resources. So far, we have held three mobile spay and neuter clinics in the city for house cats. Out of ninety available spots, we successfully provided a surgery, nail trim, vaccine, and flea treatment package to eighty cats, and forgotten cats provided those services for dozens more. Earlier this month, we held a vaccine clinic for dogs and cats at TruVine at Seventh and Morton, where we vaccinated upwards of eighty animals. I also spent the last few weeks doing a direct outreach myself and have hand-delivered almost two-hundred pounds of dog and cat food to citizens in need. We're also looking to hold an additional vaccine and microchip clinic on August seventh, but we just haven't nailed down a location yet. The fourth spay and neuter clinic for house cats, the flyer is outside there. Um, as of this morning, there were still about twenty spots available, so you can register by the little QR code, or you can do it online. And the best part about all of these clinics is that they have been brought to our constituents of the city completely, one-hundred percent, for free.
Thank you.
And that is all. If anybody's got any questions, you, please feel free to, to ask me. You can follow my page on Facebook. I post everything that we have, um, and if anybody wants to help out in any way, feel free to get in touch with me, get in contact with me. Thank you.
Thank you. I will say that, uh, Ms. J.C. has proven to be an animal lover, and for those people who love your animals as well, it's great to know that there's a resource here in the city of Chester that will care for your pets in that manner. I will also say that the city of Chester is still challenged. Still challenged, still challenged with the animal control part of this equation. I just got an email the other day of, uh, just, just, you know, big bad dogs roaming, uh, free. Uh, I've also got reports from others that people are dumping dogs here in the city. I'm seeing some nods here. So, we know that we have to double down and, and just try to find some way to, uh, implement animal control here in the city. Lisa Whitaker. Is it two people here and Mr.? Oh, oh, okay, that's a hyphen. I'm sorry. Lisa Whitaker.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
My problem is, I need, um, on our street, I live on People Street. When you talk about, the guy was talking about extra cars and all that, and they, yeah, we got plenty of that now. But I need, um, concrete barriers, bumps, whatever, to slow the traffic, because Ms. West did, um, reduce the speed limit and also for tractor trucks coming through the neighborhood, but now, it's the speeding that's occurring. And I be sitting out there, it's, it's bad. And we got a lot of kids now. We have a lot of children, since we have foreign people moving in our neighborhood, which don't have a problem, but they have children, they plays, and it's, it's bad. So, I just wanna address that situation before somebody get hurt.
What hundred block?
People Street.
What hundred block?
People Street is not a, it's like a...
What's the address on People Street?
I'm at twenty-six seventeen. It's like a cur, like a curb.
The call to say.
It goes from like twenty-four to twenty-seven, or...
Yeah, it goes from one end to the other end.
Yeah.
Okay.
You're at twenty-six what?
Seventeen.
I know, I know it, but I just...
Yeah. Yeah, so, that's my biggest concern right now, is getting some kind of speed control bumps, so they can slow down, because it's, it's a bad traffic area now.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So, you'll be happy to know that with our new Public Works Director, we have had conversations already about speed bumps in the city. There will be a policy that will be crafted, and we kinda see it going like this. There will be a facility for you guys to, uh, let us know where you'd like to see a speed bump. We'll send a Public Works person out there to verify the location. We'll send the engineer out to look at the location and determine several things, like what type of speed bump would work, uh, where it should be located, because there are some ordinances that are pretty strong regarding how far from a corner and the distance between curves. Uh, in some cases, there might be a speed study done, because although you might think speeding is an issue, sometimes there has to be proof to verify that, that, that speeding is an issue. I'm not saying it's not an issue. We know people are riding around here like they're crazy. Uh, we know already, like, a dozen blocks where speed bumps are gonna go down. There's also an expense to speed bumps, and we do not have in our budget uh, any provisions for buying speed bumps, but certainly it will be, uh, considered for the twenty-twenty-five budget. Doesn't mean we won't see speed bumps going in, uh, this year, and finally, uh, Mayor and Council will have to approve any speed bump that goes in, because it's gonna cost a couple of dollars. But I just want everybody to know that the process for putting speed bumps where they belong in the city has begun. Thank you. Uh, Livia Smith.
Good morning.
See the presenter's scutting, they left. This is a little ticket, well, this is a little flyer, I should say, that was given to the residents, uh, I guess with this parking. This was found on my car. It wasn't at my, at my door, so therefore, you know, if it was a heavy rain, this would've blew off and so forth. So, it says July first, and as they stated. Is there a fee for that parking, is there? Is there a fee to register your car to park in front of your house?
Twenty-five dollars a year.
I know the handicap people, it's twenty-five dollars a year, but you're saying, in these particular zones, now there's a fee to park your car? That's what you're saying?
It's a residential parking permit.
Okay, there never was one in the past. There wasn't a fee in the past, that's why I was asking. I know there's a fee, you have a handicap per year. So, now you gotta pay a handicap fee, and then you gotta pay a parking fee for the same car. In front of my house. On my three cars. Now, I'm just asking.
Now, I don't have the policy in front of me, but I, what, what this new parking, uh, management company is doing is following, following the policies in the past. Whether they were implemented in the past, I'm not sure, but they have determined neighborhoods where residents would have to register their cars. I don't know how far that went when it, uh, was instituted.
We never completed it.
Never completed it.
Never completed it. I mean, it was in the works, but it was never completed, because then, that's when other things came up with the parking, and how we were gonna manage it and what happened.
So, this is not a citywide parking, it's just certain areas.
Certain zones.
It was the four zones that you saw.
Certain areas, like Washington Park, that's the area I'm in. Sun Hill. Then you're talking about Widener, 'cause I see the little poles there. Then you're talking about down on the west end, where the, uh, soccer stadium, they're gonna take businesses from them people in parking. Um, and you're talking about downtown Chester.
And Nova Vista.
And Nova Vista.
Now, the soccer stadium isn't approved yet, that, that's in the future.
Okay.
But, th, this parking management company is only going off of what the past ordinances has stated, and what the past parking, uh, management company was doing or was supposed to do. It's nothing new. We didn't, we haven't approved anything new. This is all from the past.
But it does have to...
The clock is still ticking, I wanna tell me.
But it does have to be determined, you know, how we're gonna work this. You're paying a fee for parking versus the, um, handicap parking, how that's gonna work. So, I haven't heard anything about how we're gonna... I guess that's something we can talk about. I'm sorry.
So, I have, and y'all keep...
Okay, hold on. As, as with soccer? As with soccer, after the time has run out, you, you, you have one minute of extra time.
Oh, is it?
Go right ahead, since we talked all over you.
Y'all were talking, y'all were talking.
Mm-hmm.
So, when I go downstairs today with my little car, I have to register, and I gotta leave money. Is that what you're saying?
We're learning too.
We don't know.
Yeah, we don't know.
Okay, well, because it says I have to do it by July first, and I won't be here. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna cut off.
If you go down there, they'll tell you.
I'm gonna go down there today.
Are they in the office?
He said he will be there.
Okay, they're down there.
Okay. Because I, I mean, that's really interesting, because certain areas has been, have to pay to park, and other people don't have to pay to park.
Yeah, so, I think what you're asking is, is the ordinance. Well, I'll, I'll get you the ordinance, so you can see the areas. Okay.
Well, I saw what you pla, what they put up on the screen.
Right.
Nova Vista people don't have to park. Washington Park, Sun Hill, I guess Widener University, if they're back in the mix again.
Yep.
But I'll go down and I'll find out, because if they want everybody to know, they need to put it in their door, not on the car. Not in the car, not on the car, because the rain would wash this away, and that would cease.
And those zones are the zones that the previous parking, uh, study determined there was a parking crisis.
Right, and I understand that because of the fact Widener University is in those areas.
Right.
They're overt, overtaking a lot of the residential people parking.
And then the hospital is in the Nova Vista area, they was taking the parking and so forth.
I got that, but then, but then the residents gonna have to pay just to secure their own... Okay, thank you. But it's not everybody.
Yeah, just to, you know, one more point there. There's, there's actually other residents in town who are willing to pay to reserve their spots, particularly like Memorial Park, where, uh, football, you know, youth football takes up all the parking spots, they can't get in or out. So, they're looking for some relief as well. But all this is, all this is relative to change. For instance, a lot of the reasons why, uh, Nova Vista neighborhoods were being overrun by cars was because Crozier Hospital was charging in their parking lots. Since then, I've been over there, have they started charging again? I think it's free parking at Crozier, so, you know, people can now park in the Crozier parking lot. So, there's gonna be some adjustments. We're just starting off with what we left off with. Who's next? We've got Mr. Laura Shelton. That's you. Take your time. Mm-hmm. But when you get up there, you only have three minutes. No, we're not counting that. We're gonna reset that thing to three minutes. Your first word, the clock starts.
First of all, um, I like that open fire.
There you go, perfect.
Because my neighbor, uh, a couple of days ago, had open fire on their back porch or their yard, but I could see the flame. I never heard of such. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear. So, you need to look into that open fire. Can I just call and tell you there's some flames?
Mm-hmm, nine-one-one.
Okay, number...
And before you go to number two, before you go to number two...
Ooh, there's something flying around. Exterminating!
Before you go to number two, if anyone also sees anyone, uh, grilling on a, on a porch with a roof, like, that's, that's not allowed either, so...
No, I'm about to...
I know you're not, but that, that's kinda related.
And now, the Fourth of July is coming. I'm ninety-one years old, and the Fourth of July, I'm scared of that, because the shootings and the bombings and the woo, and the house shaking. I'm too old for this, and I done paid too many taxes. I shouldn't have to go through this. And then that music with those words I'm not allowed to say. And it goes on after eleven o'clock. They start at nine in the morning, 'cause we have a new kinda neighbor now. They from foreign countries, and their entertainment is different. So, they start early in the morning, using the language, and throwing the, you know, the firecrackers, and they think it's funny. They sit on the porch, woo! It's not funny, and my taxes, I shouldn't have to go through that. You're kinda old, late opening up the pool, a summer's half-old. And, uh, oh, parking. You mean to tell me that I'm gonna have to pay to park? I'm already paying for my handicap, I don't mind that. But now, I'm gonna have to pay double just to park. And let me tell you, all these new folks on that street, they have three, four, five cars, some legal, some non-legal, and, oh, lots of trucks, and then they're building. Now, I tried to talk to that lady back there in license and whatever she is. She won't, she won't even speak to you. She ran back there in her office, closed the door, and wouldn't even come in. And I'm helping to pay her salary, because I'm a taxpayer, and that's not right. And then, let me tell you what else I got down here. Spreading people, I don't know what that news was. Okay, but anyway, and summer, oh, and when that man said, he went around putting stuff in doors, he never came, oh, that's what I had to tell you. He never came up on Eighteenth Street. Now, you talking about speeding. I, I want somebody to come to Eighteenth Street. First of all, there are no open parking spaces, 'cause they, they are parked in the field. But, they, they come, they start at Providence and don't stop to smelly. And I know that's my three minutes. I said a lot, I'm gonna make some more notes next time. But thank you for listening, and I ask you to take action on some of it. Thank you.
That's the kinda spirit we need in here. Thank you. She can read, she can read. I was pretty sure of the Robinson, the first name. I couldn't have guessed. Good morning.
I'm back again about the no parking sign for Morton Avenue in the back. And I'm back again because... And I'm back again because last week, they were supposed to pick up our trash, and they didn't. And I called the company, and the guy kept saying, "I'm gonna call my supervisor, I'm gonna call my supervisor." But somebody told me yesterday I was supposed to call over here because they under contract with y'all. The trash day is due tomorrow. We got last week's trash over there. And I just, I kept calling. He kept saying, "I'm gonna tell my supervisor." But I found out yesterday I was supposed to call over here to talk to a young lady because the company is under contract. And that trash set, I asked the guy, "Please don't let this trash sit over the weekend," and it said... It's still there. The trash day is tomorrow. Although I do put bleach in mine so the squirrels and stuff won't get in. But some people don't do that.
You're on Parker?
Morton Avenue, 10th Avenue Block, in the rear.
1037?
Yes. And I do, we do have a lot of banning cars on Morton Avenue and High Street.
And your trash is collected in the rear normally? I'll take this right down after me.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Joan Broadfield.
Thank you, briefly. I wanted to thank you for the news I heard this morning about looking at ordinances. I'm so grateful that that's actually happening. I was going to say, "When is it going to happen?" And it's happening, that's so wonderful. I'm concerned about a crematorium that was built in my area during the pandemic. And one of the things I'm not as familiar with is zoning ordinances. And I think that our community could use more information on that. Why was a crematorium built in a day when they are discovering how polluting they are? I have a picture that shows the smoke coming out of that, that is in my neighborhood. That's scary. So I'm asking that that be something that's put on the agenda for looking at, "Why is there a crematorium here, relatively recently built? And what was the process that didn't happen in my community where my church and another church never got notice about it, where neighbors never got a notice about it to give input?" So that's my question. Thank you so much for creating a culture of trust rather than the culture of fear that I remember when we first moved into Chester in the 70s. So I'm really appreciating that a new energy is present. And as I think about the parking, I am concerned that the rate was really high. I park also in Swarthmore and in Media. And if you're gonna look at a good parking assessment idea, Swarthmore has a wonderful one. Media's is huge because they have a lot of business and restaurants. But Swarthmore's is very, very practical. It has an amount, you can pay five bucks if you have been overparking. And if you pay it immediately, it stays that. If it's more, if you haven't paid it, it goes way up. So that's something I think would be good to look at. Also, I am aware the public parking that years ago was paid for across from the police station has been wonderfully not needing paying for. A lot of people park there who can't afford to pay a lot. And I'm wondering if there's any idea about how residents who need to come in sometimes to park might get some way of being able to register as a resident and not yet find, not yet have to pay the amount that the parking meter might require. So that's my thoughts. Thanks so much for your service, I really appreciate it.
Don't go away.
Okay.
Where is this crematory?
It's off of Providence Road and 21st... Providence Avenue, yes. Thank you, yes, Providence. It's behind a funeral home.
2316 Providence Avenue.
I'm happy to send you the picture that I actually have on my notebook. It was awful.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. John Shelton.
Is that the funeral home?
In your mouth.
Sound good.
Thank you very much, the operator over there.
You gotta hurry up.
Mayor, Councilor. You were going over things that I've gone over the last 40 years, 50 years. I'm not going to repeat. My wife and I are on the same train because we live in the same house for the last 70 years. So we're in tune and we try to support. We try to help out where we can, do what we can for citizens and the taxpayers. Same token, it should be where everyone paying taxes should have a say. I don't understand why this parking wasn't given to the community or wasn't told about it. We weren't even told about your plan for the parking, when you bring it back in here. We went through the last one, and I helped try to get it created. There's a lot of things that are not being said. Whether you tell us or these folks that give you these plans. But we should be told about this. Been here this long, been here this long and paying taxes this long. I've been paying taxes since I bought my first house. My son was two years old, he's now 70. So... And you're getting on top of it slowly. But we don't want it all over us before we die. We like for some things to happen right now. The other thing is, we're thankful for what has been worked on and is working. There's not enough communication yet. And if you notice, every time I get up this amount, I say that we got to have a communication. You can't run anything or work anything unless you communicate. It don't seem like you all, as our leaders, are coming together with things like you should. I may be wrong, if I'm wrong, I stand corrected. But from what I'm hearing, from what I see, we're coming together, that's enough. If we can help you in any way, we will. And we want you to help us. We thank you for what you've done already and it's working. Thank you very much.
Thank you. It's well delivered. This... Ms. Alethea Davis Moses.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Well, no.
Good afternoon.
I have seven issues that I want to bring to your attention.
You've got three minutes to squeeze it in.
I know. Okay, first I want to talk about poison ivy. Okay, I live in a 448-yard old street. I came over here several times in the past and just recently. Their house next door to me is covered. It's coming over into my house. It grew in my house on my porch. I had to get my old porch redone because it was growing in my house. Okay? Now, I'm gonna just show you this. You look at this and you tell me, is this fair to me? I have to go outside my house and spray somebody else's house. I'm not doing it anymore. You see this, and who's gonna reimburse me for my house that I had to redo? This is not fair, okay? That's one. Number two, parking the stadium, okay? You see me. However, I am disabled. I do have a handicap act, okay? This weekend, I came home, someone has parked outside my house. My house where I live, where I pay tax. I sat outside because I blocked the man, because that's what I'm gonna do, because I'm tired of it. You have a whole street across the street from my house where you can park. You don't need to be outside my house. Okay? So now it was two young men who came walking up the street. Oh, they decided to cuss me, which they should not do. Because I'm gonna cuss you back despite this cross. I will cuss you back as I demand respect, okay? And that's my house. And they called the police, that's the problem I had. They called the police, I called the police. And then when the argument got heated, my neighbor called the police. Because you're looking at one woman against two men. She's calling for help for me, no one never showed. No one showed at all, okay? They, my now neighbor pulled her gun out. Okay, because she ain't having it, and neither am I, okay? Number three, like I said, called the police, no show. They were called three times, okay? Three times. Number four, police show up for noise complaint, for false report at 2031. Okay, but you can show up there, but not for me. Okay, if this can add another minute, please. I believe landlords should be held accountable for the behaviors of their tenants. If you don't want to have these people removed, then they need to be held accountable for the behavior that their tenants are doing to other folks.
Yes.
Okay, now, they keep messing with my child. They keep messing with her. Now, they done called the police twice. I said it before, I don't like baseball. They got one more game.
Okay, give us your last two.
To approach my child.
Give us your last two, please.
That's it. The petition for troublemaking bullies, we can be fine. The last one is, I saw on Facebook that I need to register my call. I didn't know if it was a scam or not, so that was my last thing. Is it a scam or do I need to come over here and register to park my call? That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael Lewis.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilor.
Morning.
Hi, my name is Michael Lewis. And you may have seen me some way, somehow, sooner. I'm one of many Michael Levises, I'm probably not gonna make out your name, but I'm here. All right, I live here, I wanna work here, I wanna play here. This is not a city where you can live, work, and play. You probably don't wanna live, work, work, play here. But I want to. It's something here that I look up. I live in the best neighborhood in the city of Chester. I live downtown, it's the best. I'll pay for parking if I have to. It's part of living downtown. But I came here today because I wanna live, work, and play. I know y'all trying, y'all very best to make that happen. However long it takes, I wanna see it through. Hopefully, we get there sometime soon. I came here specifically because I saw a doctor life program back in the day, maybe 10 years ago. Mayor, you had something to do with it, and I wanna see, or you wanna see if we can get that back? Because I would like to see if we can utilize the empty lives that we have to benefit the community. Not necessarily always have to be green spaces that get destroyed or not used. Can we use these empty spaces to accommodate our young entrepreneurs that wants to sell? Can we also use these spaces to possibly make money from our own parking that the stadium's taking? All the revenue, and who knows if this even, if you want to stay, you could be an outside person disposing. All right, I wanna live, work, and play here. Some of you might have people that you want to live, work, and play here, but some of you don't want to do either. So I just say, I love this city, I'm gonna be here as long as I can. And to any senior that's here, I am offering free, no resources for you because you have real business out there that needs to be taken care of. Do not take state minimum. Yeah, I wanna live, work, and play here.
Thank you.
Thank you. How would the seniors get in touch with you if they want your services?
I am actively working on communication by having access available to M. Lewis P.A. Notary. That's how I miss the crowd. M. Lewis P.A. Notary, I am working with those other community speakers to help me get the communication available. So if you're comfortable, not to take state minimum fees or problems, anything like that, feel free to apply. It's anything that you need.
Thank you so very much.
Mr. Lewis, you said M. Lewis P.A. Notary? Thank you.
Mayor, you might have skipped his name. I know, I think that Mr. Salim signed, but he might have scribbled it down.
I've got him.
Got it, okay. Oh, my goodness.
All right, you got three minutes, give us your name and address.
My name is Bob Reed, I live at 2627 West Sixth Street.
Thank you.
I see these people coming in and they're talking to your father. I've had my kids come down to my house in the afternoon with 10 or 15 cars. I'm back there in the alley on the side where they just come in. They got like the news do over the smell of school, we used to talk about that with the Little League baseball and basketball. See, they have special zone over there. About why in college you putting this park on the outside, you got to make special plays about. Well, that's what y'all can do with the whole city.
No.
Thank you, I appreciate that when you said no. Because I want to park there. Another thing y'all need to get back to. I paid my taxes on the corner of Fifth Street for 100 years. Now your taxes go all out in the north now, from everywhere. But how do you even know how much money you get when your money leaving town? Your money should be in your city. One of y'all should be over there, like it used to be years ago. Jack Ringruff, one John McClory, Mel Bauer, number one, it was over that money. You as the mayor, you supposed to be seeing what's going on with the money. You don't let your money go out of town. As hell, they get money straight back in the road. It ain't coming back to them. It can take a lot of time. Because I've been around them many years, so it might go look like it. And another thing we need to do here, the park air pump here for the little truck. And there we did, I dig that hole in it, and it saved that oil. You come down there like you coming down to my house on Ward Street. You can just walk along the road and go down on you to that street, and the water will flow up. Not bad. Little kid six or seven years ago, he'll chase water. You know it, I know it. Because you was little, you let the water... You don't come and put your head up. We got a lot of traffic here around Chicago. And I hope y'all get turned on, we got them. We got them down in the back of the city here this time. And everybody running out of sleep, come down, try to take a dollar for these vehicles. I got them people come down and fuck that government's money. That happened in Miami, Florida, and Jacksonville, and Atlanta, Georgia, South Atlanta, turning around. But then, I got paid down South, but I don't do turn around. It's a big deal, everybody want your money right change this little city. We paying the stormwater right now, and yesterday, I had to go out on the drain and clean the drain up. Yeah, then anybody clean the drain up, I had to go out there. Because the other man had to go out there with my boots on and all stop, they had water running all over sidewalks. And a police come by there, he just, "Listen, where you, where you..." They called you a southern man, "What you doing out there?" You ain't have no choice, you're gonna have to... Y'all paying for that? I bring it down from the end of the road.
I think it is.
Y'all have a blessed day. And don't forget to say your prayers.
Before Mr. Salim comes up, I'm gonna mention, make a couple comments. I think what you're saying, that once upon a time, Chester City Government received or processed tax dollars for city taxes, county taxes, and school district taxes. We don't do that anymore. Downstairs, we just take city taxes. And then the other authorities or organizations like the school district, they have their place to send your tax dollars to, and the county has their place to send their tax dollars to. they have their place to send your tax dollars to, and the county has their place to send their tax dollars to. I have to agree, it would be convenient if you could pay all three in one place, and, you know, maybe we can get back to that point. But it's not like dollars are leaving the city and disappearing. Uh, city dollars are paid downstairs taxes, and the school district has their method, and the county has theirs. And black and white people doing business in the city of Chester. This is the predominantly black town, and I think what he said is only white people are doing business in the city of Chester. I don't think we have any ordinance, policy, or procedure that prohibits black folks from doing business in the city of Chester. Step up. Let's go. The town's for the taking. Let's go. Let's go. Let's go. Let's go. Nothing's stopping black folks from doing business in Chester. Let's go. Step up. Put your money together. Let's do something. Let's go. I'm not stopping you. You stopping them? All right, I'm tired of hearing that, y'all. I really am. I really am tired of this. This town is for the taking. If you want to let people come in and take it and not be the business person, the entrepreneur, learn how to do business in your own town, that's not our fault. Don't be coming up here talking that mess. I'm not listening to that.
They say how black folks don't want to work with each other. They try to tear each other down. Where you have Mexicans, and you have white folks, and Africans.
Thank you. Mr. Sal-
They all work together.
Mr. Saleem.
Well, we don't. Why? Signing sheet. Signing sheet. Done? This is, here our last one?
Yes. What's your address, Mr. Saleem?
Three forty Patterson.
My name, I mean, I do, Saleem, I live two forty Patterson Street, address, uh, two forty Patterson.
Two forty Patterson? Thank you.
As well, and I, I'd like to, uh, my name's, I mean, I do, Saleem, live two forty Patterson. You have to excuse me today. I, I had not planned to come today. I, uh, and I looked in the paper, and I saw this headline and all that. All of a sudden, I decided, you know, maybe I should come to make some, you know, small, uh, Inshallah, to keep us safe, Inshallah, to do what I can to keep us, you know, safe. There's a lot of people saying, or making comments, and, uh, you know, I, I just, uh, if I may mention, sir, let me just say, uh, the paper is Get Down to Business. I think that's just the headline of the paper. And we're going to, uh, get, get down. And this is very important statement, if we can understand. There's a lot that we, we just simply do not understand, but God is going to allow us to understand. He's going to bring us to understand. So until we get there, we struggling to get to the proper understanding. Uh, down to business. God said, look, when I breathe into Him with my spirit, bow ye down. That's the spirit everyone, bow down. All this other stuff, they can come in and make a effective, uh, statement, or what's going on there. But they're, they're effective up here, in the Get Down to Business, they're effective. America is called the prince of the air. Amir Cup, the prince of the air. All this that we have come through, um, in there, so God's bringing it down, getting down to business, you see. So as we get down, there, good sense up there and all that, it's going to leave them. God is going to be giving us good sense. Sense, they have to come over there and offer a statement. Bow ye down to Him. And if you want to bow, you do not want to bow down to Him, then bow ye down to Him.
Twenty seconds, Mr. Saleem.
So Inshallah, I wanted to keep a good, and, uh, I gave a few. So, sir, so with that, there's part of it that we are coming to understand, and to say, but, uh, you know, that does just, we might as well. The, uh, this is the receiver. I, 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 I didn't recognize, but the receiver, if I may, sir, he looks like he's, uh, open for some, looking for some answers. And I am, uh, I, I would say to you, starting right at the beginning, everybody's going to get you. Keep coming, keep looking at this, and it will be, right, it will be good understanding.
Thank you. I got to say one thing about Mr. Saleem. Every time he comes in, he has today's paper under his arm. That's a throwback, for sure. I'm sure it's today's. I've seen it. You don't have to sign in. Come on up here. You work here. It's announcement time, anyway, so we'll start with our director of. Okay. Anything you want to share before you go?
Uh, yeah.
Before you go.
Sorry, I pinned on it. I have a meeting with Penn Dot. They've been here about half an hour, thirty minutes waiting on me. So, but before I go, uh, there will be a Fourth of July celebration on, uh, Fourth of July, three P. M. at Memorial Park. It's also going to be the day that we finally open the pool for the children, and it's going to be free that day and free all summer. So I hope all the residents come out and enjoy Fourth of July, and God bless.
Thank you. Ms. Rosetta Carter.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Councilor. First of all, can you hear me all right?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you hear me now? Is that better?
Yes.
I'd just like to say thank you for coming to be a part of the blood drive on yesterday. Although we had to move into the Union Hall because of the problem. So I'd like to take the time to thank you as well, Justin, for coming down to add to our numbers. Also, I just wanted to commend Mayor, Councilor. And I don't know who was in charge of the grass cutting in the park for Juneteenth.
Public Works Department, Parks Department, yeah.
But I just like, is anybody in Public Works here?
They just went in the hole.
I'd just like to say, they did a superb job. Not only did they cut grass, it was well manicured. I've been visiting that park for years, uh, for different celebrations. But I'm happy to say, when I got there on that Saturday, it was well manicured, and it was a great celebration. So I just want to say thank you to Mayor and Councilor. Because I know people get a lot of complaints all the time, but they did a great job.
Great.
And also, we like to say, okay, that we are going to do a fan giveaway. We do fan giveaways every year, but there are eligibility requirements. Anyone just can't get a fan, but again, if you call me at my extension, I'll be happy to talk with you then. And we're going to start giving away on July first, and that's this one coming. So if you know a senior citizen, or someone who's disabled, doesn't have a fan, please. And if they're not eligible, I can refer them to other businesses.
What's your extension, or what's your full number? It's six, ten, four, four, seven?
Seven, seven, zero, zero.
Seven, seven, zero, zero.
Extension seven, nine, five, five.
Extension seven, nine, five, five.
Exactly.
Okay, and I know we've purchased, I think, one hundred fans?
One hundred.
Okay.
And we do have cooling stations, uh, between the commissioner, Shirley, and the emergency team. Uh, the access center, there's a cooling station, as well as Booker T. Washington School. So if we have residents that do not have, you know, fans or are extremely hot.
Not the Booker T. Washington School.
Right.
But the community center, I would think you're saying.
Is it the community center? They change the commissioner?
No, they don't have a school, yeah.
Okay.
Booker T. Washington School's been long gone. You know that.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. But anyway, um-
Yeah, the community center.
So I'll be visiting the cooling stations, just to make sure that people are utilizing it. Because if they're not utilizing it, there's going to be quite a half cooling station or warming station.
Well, I won't go that far. There's always a need for cooling stations and warming stations, but we do have to raise the awareness.
Okay, well, we are, we are.
So a couple of the rec centers that are in ill repair right now, we, we want to get those going, like Eleventh and Upland, and oh, where's the other one? I can't remember. Oh, Sun, Sun Village Park. You know, the money that we're investing in those are for them to also become cooling and warming stations.
That's great, okay. But again, we do have events, after the start, there should be sessions on Monday, July first.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
And Ms. Carter, your new public works director is, um, Councilman Hay, Hayman. And he, um, you just received a compliment on the job well done in the parks by your public works crew.
They did a superb job.
Yeah, so she was, uh, complimenting you on the, uh, you, your department on the good job that they did.
There's a difference in cutting grass, and man, you can cut natural grass as well, you know, it is, they get all that for Juneteenth. So I just wanted to take the time to say thank you.
I'm going to listen to you said that. I just want to say, once I was located right now, I started here on Monday.
Okay.
Yeah, but I just wanted you to, to hear.
I'm glad you were honest, because I wanted to say that, but I didn't.
Right. He's, he's-
Those guys work hard out there, I signed, okay, and thank you. Thank you, everyone. If you need a fan, just let me know.
All right, let's go down the table here. Council, you have any announcements?
Yes, I wanted to just, uh, notify our residents that there will be a grab and go food distribution by Moravia, uh, Cares, and, um, they're coming down. It's going to be a first come, first served, but they'll have plenty of food and other resources available on Friday, uh, June twenty-eighth, starting at one P. M., and it is a first come, first served basis. It's going to be at Seventh Avenue with Estates. And that there is also a, another camp at the Worship, uh, Praise Life Center. It's called the Blast Camp. It's from eight A. M. to five P. M., and it's a hundred and fifty dollars. The thing that I was excited about the most is, over at Career Link, uh, if the mothers are trying to find a job, there's a grant for a thousand dollars per household. So if you could spread the word to mothers that have children that want to go to camp, there is a resource available to them. And the other thing, I just wanted to thank Mr. Michael Lewis for offering help to our seniors, sir. I thank you very much for offering that, because when it comes to fees, they're already paying a lot for a whole lot of other things. But that you would give your, uh, services to them, I really appreciate you, so thank you very much.
Okay, um, on a sad note, um, since about January or February, we've had about four infant deaths. And, um, to try to combat this type of thing, um, Keystone First is sponsoring this Friday, June twenty-eighth, um, a Mommy and Me, Mommy and Me event, and it's going to be from twelve noon to four P. M. And there will be all types of services there and, um, resources for young mothers. You know, some of us back in, in the, back in the day, we used to sleep with our babies on our chest. I know I'm, I'm guilty of that, and, and thank God, nothing happened. But now it's becoming a problem, because we've had four deaths as a result of infants. Is it five? I got fi- four, but five, um, deaths. So, um, if you see a young mother, we don't know what they're going through. It could be depression or anything, but someone that you can support, you know, just by showing them some love and, and maybe resource information, and just maybe even inviting them to church and, and teaching them about what you know about parenting. It would be very helpful, very helpful. So, um, again, if you know of any young mothers, please let them know about the event on Friday, June twenty-eighth, from twelve to four, for the Mommy and Me event.
Very good, thanks. Um, so good afternoon again, everyone. I want to announce that I'm happy that I partner with, uh, African American Wellness Agency, as well as the National Center of Urban Affairs, to sponsor fifty of our young people from the city of Chester to have a full day of, uh, Eagles experience with the Philadelphia Eagles. Um, a lunch, hanging out with Jalen Hertz, different coaches, having a full experience. Uh, all free, no charge to the city of Chester. I was happy that I made those connections and partnerships. So if you know any young people, um, right now, we're looking for the age range of eight to eighteen years old, but I will be happy to open it up to see if we can do a little younger, or maybe go a little older to have some people sponsor and be like chaperones. But please reach out to me directly so we can get, um, as many, you know, young people involved this summer as we can. You know, I heard Councilman Green mentioned that we're hoping to open the pool July fourth. I haven't heard any updates about the pool, but I know that it's important that our young people have something to do to something, something productive, something positive, something they can be proud of and learn from. So I'm happy to announce that, uh, on July eighteenth, that's a Thursday, um, we're sponsoring this, um, some youth from the city of Chester to go up to Philadelphia and have the full Eagles experience.
That just reminds me of a time when the Eagles used to practice right here in Chester at Widener University. That used to be so cool. Go up there and see those guys. All right, I got a couple announcements. Can you put up the Safe Summer site again?
Give your information.
My information, okay. I'm sorry, so for my information, um, my official email is S. Davis at ChesterCity.com. Um, I can, you can reach me, my cell phone number is eight, three, five, excuse me, two, two, zero, five, one, three, zero. And as always, if people want to-
Sorry.
Yeah, I don't know what's going on with the microphone, but as always, if people want to pull me to the side, that number that I just gave is my city hall cell, but people know in the community, I give out my personal cell phone number. So if you stop me at the city council, I'm happy to give you my personal cell phone number, um, so that way we can try to provide, like I said, these services for our young people in the community.
Thank you.
Councilman Davis, I'm sorry, the mic.
Yes.
Now I'm touching it. Say the phone number again, please.
So the eight, three, five, two, two, zero, five, one, three, zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'll close it out here with a couple announcements. First of all, up on the screen to remind you again is our Safe Summer twenty twenty-four site. It will be constantly updated. Also, make sure you get this flyer for a couple events. One happening tonight, bowling at the Sproul Lanes. So every, uh, council meeting, we have the latest in terms of, uh, announcements of community activities. There's a new one I'm, I'm, I'm launching, and thank you, Council, for launching, you know, your own individual efforts. That's really exciting. That's, that's really what we want to see. I'm starting a lecture series. It's called the Mayor's Lecture Series. We're going to kick it off on, uh, Tuesday, July second, right here in this room. It's free. It's open to the public. It's going to start at six P. M. Our first lecturer, our first guest, and it's about a ninety-minute session, will be Swalthmore College Professor John Caskey. And the topic that he's going to speak on is something that he writes about, that he wrote about. He's a professor of, uh, urban studies and, and a bunch of other things. Uh, Housing and Chester's Future. That's going to be the topic du jour. If you want to see some of his studies, you can just look him up. John Caskey, S., I'm sorry, C.A.S.K.E.Y. Swalthmore College Professor. He's written a couple papers, one on housing in Chester, the other on the Chester education, uh, situation. But I thought it would be interesting to have him come in. We can sit back, enjoy, relax, and just listen to a lecture from some of these intellectuals, uh, in our area. There's a, this is going to be a series, an ongoing series. Uh, one of the others that we have lined up is for mental and, mental health and drug and addiction services right here in the city. So we've, we're, we're getting a growing number of both, uh, service providers and people who are troubled with drug, alcohol, and mental issues. So we think that's going to be really important, too. So I don't want to go too far out on what's scheduled. If you guys have some ideas, some subject matter experts that you'd like to bring before the community, please let me know, and we will schedule them as well. And then, we're finally getting around to doing town halls where I can get out and speak to people. The first one's going to be on Thursday, July eleventh, at six thirty, at the, and I hate to say this, because I don't know a lick of Spanish. I wish I could read this off, but we all know it as the Hispanic Church down on Third Street, across from the, the, uh, Red Brick Cafe, if you will. Used to be a voting polling location, five twenty-five West Third Street. Again, that will be Thursday, July eleventh. It's geared toward Chester's Latino community, and there will be a bilingual translator there. There, there are other town halls that are being scheduled around town. We had another one scheduled, but it conflicted with, with something, so we had to push that back. But I'll be getting around town, uh, doing that. And I think we talked about the State of the City that was presented yesterday. We're going to also go around, uh, the city, so that residents can come and hear the State of the City. I am not going to apologize for the price, or that there was a price for attendance at the State of the City that was held at Widener University yesterday. That was sponsored by the- That was sponsored by the Delaware County Chamber of Commerce. That was their program. This is not new for them to charge for their states of. We attended the State of the County just a few weeks prior. You know, we paid to attend there. And I know from their accounts, they've been hosting the State of the City in Chester for twenty years, and for twenty years, they've been charging. So it's, it's nothing new. It's nothing that we were trying to prevent people from coming from. But it makes it a whole lot easier to have an outfit like them, who are kind of geared to put these events on. All we have to do is show up and, and do our thing. But to that point, just as Mayor Kirkland did last year, where he gave his State of the City sponsored by the chamber, he also went around to different community centers and churches to also present the State of the City for residents to, you know, hear it, make comments on, and present it for free. That's all I have for today. I want to thank all of you for hanging in there. It's been a long morning and early afternoon. That means you care. And that's really important. Uh, just want to see, I know some people have come in, the receiver was here earlier. I think we've introduced our associate or assistant solicitor before. You've been, you've been, okay, there we go. H.R., Director, Engineer, CFO, Fire Commissioner. I don't think there's any new ones here. We got Iacona over there. How you guys doing? So thank you, guys, again, for coming out. To, to Mr. Shelton's point, though, that, you know, we are constantly doing things to improve communications throughout the city. I think the format of, of city council is proof that we're trying to get better, you know, with agendas, with the information, with the multimedia. Uh, it's really tough these days. Back in the old days, like Mr. Salim, you bought the newspaper for twenty-five cents,